Order. And roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmle.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Here, present.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay. Presentation and discussion by Amy St. Peter from Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG, relating to our regional homeless effort. Amy.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the council. Really appreciate the opportunity to be with you here tonight. We have such an opportunity as a region to really be able to address what it will take for our region to really thrive, what it takes for every person in our communities to really have a stable place that enables them to contribute in a positive way to their communities. So, thank you very much. Your feedback tonight and moving forward will be very, very important as we strive to align these regional efforts with your local priorities. Every community has their own range of different ideas and solutions and choices that they can put into place. And what is most important about that is that you're choosing what that solution is. You're choosing the solution that will best serve the needs of your residents, whether they're housed or unhoused. And so, we stand ready to serve you in that search for solutions. We've been engaging in extensive outreach and research to be able to assemble the best information to offer to you so you can make those choices that are best for your community. And then, we can help to coordinate those activities at that regional level. So, I have some information to share with you tonight, but I do encourage you, please do stop me at any time with your questions, your ideas, and look forward to be able to have your feedback moving forward tonight. So, again, thank you so much. So, in terms of our presentation, then, these are the main topics that I'll be talking about. But if you'd like to take this in a different direction, feel free, point me in that way, and I will head there. So, look forward to having your feedback throughout this presentation tonight and this dialogue. So, in terms of mobilizing for action, there's a number of different reasons why it's important to mobilize right now. One, because we have an opportunity to get ahead of the issue. In some communities, you might not see a lot of people experiencing homelessness, but there are a lot of people in every community who are at risk. And they're at risk because of the economic impacts of COVID-19. They are at risk because of the increasing rates of evictions. We're leading the country right now in evictions, and that's not a place where we want to be. So, in every community, there are people who need help, might not know how to ask for help, and might not know where to go for help. And so, we want to make sure that we can help people before they lose their homes. It's more cost-efficient, it's more effective, and ultimately, it's just more humane. So, we really want to be able to provide that support in advance. Throughout our region, we are seeing increasing rates of homelessness, and it's greater than what we've seen in the past. So, just according to our latest street count, we have more than 7,000 people, 7,419 people who were without homes in our region, and that includes Maricopa County. And when we're talking about homelessness in this context, that does include Pinal as well. That represents a 49% increase in the number of people who are in shelter but who do not have their homes, also includes a 51% increase in those who don't even have shelter. For the first time ever, we had more people living out on the streets than we even had in shelters. That's not something that we're used to seeing, and that's a trend that we absolutely want to and need to reverse. We know that reversing this trend is more cost-effective. There's very recent research from ASU that indicates it actually costs less to offer somebody permanent supportive housing. So, if someone has been chronically homeless or homeless for an extended period of time, particularly if they have mental health issues, it actually costs more to have them living out on the streets. And it costs more because they're still interacting with all of our systems. So, you'll see increased costs through law enforcement, public works, parks, even libraries, and that's not even counting the emergency rooms and the emergency medical system. So, we're going to be spending the money either way. So, we have a choice as a community. How do we want to invest these precious funds? And how do we want to further this cause moving forward? Particularly, when we're looking at strategies around prevention and diversion, that's just more cost-effective. So, if we invest a little bit in those two areas now, that will prevent people from coming into more intensive and more costly interventions in the future. And so, we have these opportunities, too, because of the funding that's coming into our region across the country, including our region and our communities. We're seeing increased levels of funding because of the COVID-19 relief funding that's coming from the federal government. So, while we have a crisis, we also have an opportunity. And we have an opportunity to really coordinate the way that we're investing those funds, to be able to maximize those efforts. Also, being able to reach out to other partners that we might not normally think of in terms of homelessness, and that's Medicaid and Medicare. Both of them, in both areas, they are allocating millions of dollars to housing, to services that we can use to help people destabilize. And so, when we're looking at these investments, it's not just from our own checkbooks, it's also from our partners who stand ready to assist, and they have funding, ready to go, and they just need our help in coordinating all of those investments moving forward. Oops. Sorry, I clicked on the wrong button there. All right. Now, all of this work is only possible because of our partners, and we consider you to be a very valuable partner. Bryant Powell is always right there in the mix, helping us to understand your local needs, your local priorities, so we can help to coordinate that and address that at the regional level. So, cities, towns, counties, native nations are very much included in this work and are helping us to align these efforts. We're also working very closely with the Maricopa Regional Continuum of Care, which does cover Maricopa County. We're also working with partners who cover Pinal County and other areas throughout our region. There's a newer group called the Regional Collaborative on Homelessness. This is a partnership among six different regional entities. We're all working on homelessness, and we're all addressing homelessness at that regional level. So, at a minimum, we just don't want to trip over each other. At the maximum, though, we want to leverage each other's expertise, our time, particularly when we're asking for your time, for stakeholders' time. When you share that with us, we're multiplying that by six, because for the partners who are included, it's the United Way. It's ASU, it's Arizona Housing Coalition, Maricopa County, and Vilas Health Foundation. So, when somebody shares their feedback with us as a collaborative, each of our six partners are using that in our own individual efforts as well, in addition to our collective efforts. We're also engaging the best subject matter experts on a weekly basis right now to really deeply understand what are the actions that we can take as a region, as communities, to further these efforts. Oh, darn it, keep on clicking there. Okay. So, our focus, then, is threefold. We want to make sure that we are reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness. We have to show a demonstrated change. When we look out into our streets, our parks, our communities, we need to see that change. It has to be visible and concrete. We're also wanting to make sure that we're extending that change throughout the entire region. So, we're expanding the footprint, the geographic footprint of the homeless assistance programs throughout the entire region. Right now, they're highly clustered in a few communities, but every community, we have people in need. People are able to stabilize more quickly when they're in their home community. So, even if somebody doesn't have a home, they still consider that, like Apache Junction, to be their home community. This is where they work, this is where their kids go to school, this is where their faith community is, this is where their friends and family are. They can stabilize more quickly if they stay right here rather than having to go to a different community, because maybe that's where the services are at the moment. It's also important to strengthen that safety net for all people, all people throughout the region, including those who are at risk. We're finding absolutely heartbreaking stories, for example, of people who have been married for maybe 50, 60 years, they own their home outright, and then one of them passes away. And when that person passes away, they not only lose their best friend and their life partner, but maybe also that pension, and they just can't make the bills on that one. So, we're finding that people are finding themselves to be at risk who never dreamed that they would be in that position. We need to help them. So, we've developed a vision and mission statement on the basis of input from all of our partners. That's before you right now. We want to make sure that when homelessness does occur in those unfortunate circumstances, it's rare, it's brief, and it's one time. We want to break that cycle and stop that revolving door of people getting help, it's not quite enough, and then they're back out on the streets. We want to make sure that when we create that change in somebody's life, it can be sustainable for the long term. This is a process that we've been using, then, in order to undertake this work. We really wanted to embed this work in your local strategies, your priorities, your preferences. So, we start off by creating an inventory of more than 300 different strategies that are being undertaken by communities right here in our region. We then look to the best of what's working at the national level in terms of those regional approaches to homelessness. From that, we're able to cull through all that information to develop regional strategies. We've prioritized those according to the five regional goals, which I'll share in just a moment. And the 14 immediate strategies, then, are being furthered for approval actually this month. So, we're hopeful that we've done a good job on this and that when people look at the regional portfolio, they'll see the priorities of their community reflected back to them. So, these are the regional goals. You'll see that we have placeholders, because we are undergoing still more cost analysis, and so, we will be updating this. But we want to make sure that we have flexible funding, too, because there are some fees that are really hard to find a funding source for, but they're really important to cover if we're wanting to prevent somebody from becoming homeless. So, for example, I was just talking with a provider recently, and she was telling me about an elderly woman who lived in her own home, owned it outright, had paid it off years ago, but she lived in an HOA. And she wasn't able to keep up with the fees, and so, they put a lien against her house, and they took her house, and she owned that house outright. So, how much more cost-effective would it have been just to pay those HOA fees, help her get back on her feet, and keep her in her own home? And so, we're really looking at some possibilities for being able to do that throughout the region. These are the other three goals that we have in front of us right now, really wanting to make sure that we're working across sectors. There is not any one sector that causes homelessness. There is not any one sector that can solve homelessness by itself. We inherently have to be working together. Homelessness transcends all sectors, it also transcends all communities. So, people will move in search of jobs and housing and stability, and so, we have to make sure that we're providing that where they are, so they don't have to move too far. This is the overall timeline, then, that we've been engaged in. We started ramping up our efforts last fall. We've actually hosted the Continuum of Care since 1999. So, we've been engaged in homelessness for a really long time, but we've just started ramping up these efforts recently. We start off by conducting extensive research and outreach. We're developing those regional strategies. And then, pending approval in June next month, we'll pivot then to implementation, and we'll develop an implementation plan for approval that will identify who's doing what, by where, and when. We've conducted a tremendous amount of outreach to make sure that we're incorporating diverse perspectives in all of this work. That includes about 10 different forums with more than 700 people. We started off the outreach with a nonprofit community, because we wanted to make sure that we were embedding this work in their deep expertise. And from there, we've reached out to a number of different sectors, all of whom are affected by homelessness and all of whom can contribute positively to the solutions. For example, the faith forum was really, really important to address, because our faith community, they're able to offer a really holistic sense of care and support, and they're there with the person experiencing the homelessness even after they've stabilized and been able to get back on their feet again. And so, it's been really important to include them. At the regional council meeting, I think it was just last week, time is all kind of blurring, there is a request to reach out to Table of Grace Church. We're in the process of doing that. We'd love to be able to work with them, so we will be reaching out. And we'd love to reach out to anyone else that you would recommend. So, please do let us know. We want to make sure that we're supporting the stakeholders in your community as we support you as well. These are some of the conversations that we've been having, then, in these forums. We've been asking people, what's working? What's working really well right now? Because we want to amplify that, we want to regionalize that, we want to replicate that. What's not working? Because those are the things that we really need to be intently focused on fixing right now. And then, what are the greatest priorities for taking action to remove those barriers? We've also conducted surveys. We've conducted surveys when it hasn't maybe been as practical to host a forum. So, law enforcement, your law enforcement, they need to be out in the field, out in your communities, keeping people safe. So, yes. So, we offered them a survey and say, hey, you know, we'd love to understand from your perspective, what is your role in addressing this issue? And how can we support you in that role? We also asked first responders, as well as people with lived experience, people who have experienced homelessness themselves, they have a really unique perspective on what it takes to overcome that. And so, we're able to use all this information to further refine our work. We've been using this information, then, specifically in three different ways. One is to shape the regional strategies that are being used to address this very important issue. The other is to look at, on a very practical level, are there local programs that might have some viability at the regional level? Like a misdemeanor repeat offender program is working really well in some communities right now. Could we operate that at a regional level and really achieve those economies of scale and that consistency that's so important to have throughout the region? And then, also, to look at ongoing engagement. So, can we help to create ambassadors and champions for this work? And can we continue to leverage them moving into the future? We are thankful for all of the ongoing communication that we've been having underway as a result of these efforts. We understand that you, your staff, are incredibly busy with very important work and that they're sharing their time with us to undertake these efforts. And so, we're very thankful for that. We've been using this feedback really to fine-tune and sharpen our work at the regional level to make sure that it meets your needs at the local level. This is some of what we've been hearing. We've been hearing from people a really keen desire, not just to address homelessness, but to prevent it from ever happening in the first place. It's better for your communities, it's better for all the residents within your communities. And really, taking a look at those system inequities, when the system isn't serving all people equally, then we need to address that, and there are some opportunities for doing just that, really, in strengthening the coordination and partnerships and offering a whole range of different options that communities can take, including temporary housing solutions that might be made available to folks. So, we've been conducting a fair amount of data analysis as well. I want to be sensitive to time, so I might breeze through these a little bit, but if you want me to slow down and go into more depth, I'd be happy to do so. I just want to make sure that you have enough time for other items on your agenda. So, we've reviewed a number of different materials. We're constantly finding more and happy to incorporate those at any time. These are some of the highlights of what we've been hearing. You can see that our numbers of people experiencing homelessness is increasing and possibly more too, and 35% of households are reporting housing insecurity. That comes from a survey that's indicating people aren't sure if they can pay their rent or mortgage next month. And it's a really scary spot to be in as a family, as a household, and it's concerning for us as a region. We have also conducted a lot of different research, and one study in particular took a look at what are the considerations that communities need to have in mind when they're citing new homeless assistance programs? So, whether that's a shelter or a diversion program, or it's a family advocacy center, no matter what that is, there are considerations to have in mind. And so, we want to support communities as they're launching these strategies and to be able to help those programs to be successful. And so, these are the regional strategies. They're in the five different categories that you see before you now. And this is an overview of all of the different strategies. And so, they're diverse, they're really taking a look at what's needed in all of these different areas. And these are high-level, but we've been also formulating some very specific detailed tactics. And those tactics are the action steps that we need to take as a region and that communities can choose to implement for their residents as well. So, some of the things that really are coming to the top, the need for flexible funding. We need to be able to have funding that meets people's needs and really can be innovative and creative in keeping them in their homes. We also need bridge housing. Sometimes, people are able to access housing, but it's just not fast enough. And so, I was talking with one community, and there's a gentleman, and he had to wait two weeks. Well, he had his kids with him, and he's sleeping out in his car. That's not a place for anybody to be sleeping, so we need to make sure that they're safe as quickly as possible. So, moving forward, then, we want to make sure that all of the data that we've accumulated, and trust me, it's a lot of data, very detailed, local data, current data, we want to make sure that that's available to you 24/7, it's at your fingertips whenever you need it. So, we have developed this map. Right now, in front of you, you'll see that that includes the homeless assets, so the homeless assistance programs that are located throughout the region, including Pinal County. It will also include, very, very soon, the concentrations of people who are experiencing homelessness right now, as well as the population at risk. And so, when we're talking about the at-risk population, we're looking at the locations of callers to 211 when they're calling in to get information about services. We're looking at the population of poverty and the population that's being evicted as just some of those indicators. Now, when you click on one of those small icons, this is what you'll see. You'll see information that's been provided to us from 211, as well as through the continuum of care. And so, we are very excited about this, because it will be interactive, it will be available to you. The first iteration will give you access to through a password, so you can really dig into some really detailed data, and then we'll have a public-facing version of this as well. But you'll have reporting capabilities, you can draw your own geography and do your own analysis. Of course, we always stand ready to assist you. These are the next steps, then. We are fast and furiously undertaking that cost analysis. We're taking a look at what will it cost to support the additional shelter beds and housing units that we're projecting that the region will need. We're also taking a look at how much will those diversion and prevention programs need in addition to what we already have. We'll use all of that to create regional funding targets and scenarios as requested at last month's MAG Management Committee meeting, and then offering that regional strategy portfolio for action in May. In June, then, we'll pivot to implementation, and we'll have the implementation plan ready for approval, to be offered for approval in August. So, that's me. That is my direct phone number, my email address. I do encourage you, please do reach out at any time. I would love to hear from you and be able to further this dialogue with you. And I do want to thank you for your partnership, because without you, working really hard at the community level and helping to inform these regional efforts, we wouldn't be able to coordinate all of these really important activities at that regional level and be able to achieve more, because we're working together. So, that does conclude my formal presentation, though. I am eager to hear any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
Just a lot of good information.
Yeah.
It's exciting to see how much work and thought is going into this program, and obviously, yeah, last year's been a rough year, and so, we're excited about being a part of that and helping the people in our community, definitely.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Oh, thank you so much.
Not off the top of my head, no.
Brayden's wiggle, no, I'll go last.
Oh, you and I can probably go tit-for-tat on this one, really. We're involved quite a bit. Gail, do you have anything?
You know, a lot of great information.
Thank you.
And I've sat in lots of seminars on this and lots of meetings, and alls we've had is meetings. And that's really disappointing. And a lot of what you said, especially in the housing area, there is no simple solution. I mean, we have Cara here. Cara got upset because they couldn't find any landlords willing to rent to someone newly homeless. And as a landlord would look at it, well, why would I take a chance on them when I can get somebody that's had a job and has a credit history and can work? My suggestion was, why can't Cara go on the line for that lease? To give the landlord some sense of security that he's going to get his money, and they're not going to walk away and have to have many thousand dollars in repairs. So, you know, it's like we've heard it over and over and over and over again. And we still don't have a shelter here. We don't have any money for a shelter. Affordable housing, that term does not exist. It just isn't in this whole valley, in this whole state. So, you know, and we've heard many different things about building tiny homes. Well, a tiny home is nothing more than a mobile home. It's the same thing. And we got hundreds and hundreds of those. And those are full. So, we know what we need. We just need the money. So, can you show me the money?
We are working on that.
And, you know, throughout history, there's always been homeless people. And from the mentally ill to the addictive, to these new mothers that are out there. And, you know, just the stories in LA, for example, that the people that are working, living in tents, because there's nothing affordable there. So, what's the ASU's president's name?
Michael Crowe.
Crowe. Mr. Crowe made a comment in one of his webinars that his solution to homelessness is education. Well, yes, 20 years from now, maybe so, but, you know, give us some information that we can utilize today. And you're not to the point yet where you have a... Because to me, if you're homeless and you're short of cash, you need a one-stop shop for everything. Are you going to be able to provide that?
Councilmember, mayor, and council, thank you very much for that question.
Sorry, that was a lot.
No, no, that's great. It was only fair. I presented a lot, and so, yes, I appreciate receiving a lot in return. No, you bring up really critical issues, and so, just to comment on each of those. One, we share your impatience with meetings. We've been meeting on this, MAG has been working on this since 1999, and homelessness existed far before that time. And so, yeah, agreed, agreed. I am hearing a much different conversation among some really key people in the region right now. A shared kind of frustration with just continuing to meet, a shared commitment to taking action, which I think is very, very promising. And people seem really energized around working together, because we've learned a lot over this past year on many different levels. And one of them is business as usual isn't really necessarily an option. It doesn't work. You know, it used to be that people would talk about, I can't wait till things go back to normal. Things are changing. Things are changing in a number of different ways, at a number of different levels, and that brings us together and gives us some opportunities. So, we're really keenly focused on delivering the options, the solutions that communities can take while we have the attention and the energy around this right now. We are in this really unique moment in time where we have both a crisis as well as the opportunity in terms of the funding, so like you just mentioned. Also, in terms of landlords, that's a critical issue, absolutely. And so, two different things that can play into that. One is a flexible funding pool. That's absolutely critical. We have to be able to give landlords support in renting to people who are just coming out of homelessness, because mistakes will be made and damages will be incurred by any tenant, right? And so, we need to make sure that we're providing the extra layer of support so they can take that risk. And hopefully, it turns out really, really well, but if it doesn't, you know what? We can fix it. And I think that's really, really important. We're also looking at landlord engagement campaigns to help make them aware of the resources that are available, to help them tap into the different forms of support that could be made available to them, and to help with that education, too. And to help them understand what it means when somebody's been homeless and what it means when they're coming out of it, and the support that they might need as well. So, we're finding that in those interactions that can be extremely positive, but we need to communicate the results of those really positive interactions with others to encourage them to come to the table. Very valid point about funding. We were very focused on funding from the beginning of these efforts. Right away, we took a look at what are the different funding sources that are available to address homelessness, and what's eligibility per funding source? So, we developed that. All of the resources are available at the link that you see on the screen there, and that includes the funding analysis. We've also recently completed a municipal expenditure study, looking at what are the investments being made right now by the cities, towns, counties throughout our region, so Maricopa and Pinal Counties. And so, how much is being spent, what funding sources are being used, and what is the money going for? And knowing that as a baseline helps us to understand the investment that we're currently making as a region. So, then, when we're looking at the investment that we'll need, then, to implement the strategies, we'll have an idea of kind of the gap that we're trying to bridge, you know? As we're developing those scenarios that I mentioned just a little bit ago, that will include an analysis of the funding, because we're going to say, this is what it'll cost to implement these strategies. And by the way, these are the different sources of funding that could be used, then, to be able to implement these strategies. So, we'll be helping to identify those opportunities and helping to negotiate making that funding available. So, there is significant funding, there is significant need as well, and we're tracking both of those very intently right now.
First of all, thank you for coming out. I am the chair for the Pinal County Coalition to End Homelessness, and then, one of the leads here in Apache Junction, so I work with counterparts at MAG quite a bit. here in Apache Junction, so I work with counterparts at MAGA quite a bit. My frustration becomes agency collaboration because to me, it always seems that there's agencies who refuse to not be first chair or refuse to not be the ones at the very top, you know, so that they can go out and promote that, which frustrates me because it's not a one agency, it's not a one entity, you know, a one sector, as you said, it is everybody. We need faith-based, we need nonprofits, we need a level of government in the policy realm, we need landlords, the general public. So, that also comes in education. So, one of the things that we're trying to do here in Penal, which I love knowing that you guys are working on funding and strategies, I've not yet seen those, and I don't believe that anybody from the Penal Coalition or the Penal County Housing Department has been involved in those conversations. So, if we could get ahold of those, then that would be really great because we are trying to work on our strategic plan for Penal County, you know, in terms of homelessness. And then, that filters down to the two municipality coalitions being Casa Grande and Apache Junction, who are both updating their strategic plans as well over the next year. I do get frustrated with endless meetings. I sit in them all the time and hear, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and nothing happens. I love that you guys are trying to coordinate where funding is coming from because the planning grant that we get from the Arizona Department of Housing at $5,000 is nothing compared to what we actually need it to be. And, yeah, I mean, being able to not have a homeless shelter or transitional housing is incredibly frustrating. I do think that as a state, we, and I've brought this up numerous times to ADOH, is that we need to work towards decriminalization of homelessness. It's a major challenge that I think that having MAGA's voice to be able to help move that needle is going to be key to making any form of progress. I mean, especially in the growing concerns of COVID and people losing their homes, and I mean, we're seeing it in downtown Phoenix and what's happening there. The other thing, too, and I love that map, and I will definitely take some more time to look at that, when it comes to sharing information from an agency perspective, I get frustrated in the professional setting because I'm trying to work with somebody and get them funding or get them housing or whatever they might need, and I don't know where to send them because Cara might be a resource, but they might not have the funding available because of all the requirements that they're required to meet for their grant funding or wherever that may come from. And that's a challenge, too. So, I think if we can work together as a bigger region, because we do often have agencies, several of them in Penal County, actually, that also have a Maricopa branch, or contact some resources in Maricopa County to share that information so that we know that instead of saying, well, you know, here's a list of agencies that might be able to help you, here's a list of agencies that I know have funding, that I know can help, that I know can actually get the job done. Otherwise, it's a game of cat and mouse, and it's really frustrating for the person who's trying to work through that process as the individual who's experiencing it because they just keep getting doors closed on them, and that's not what we want at all. I love the 2-1-1 resource. They've really stepped up over the last year and a half to two years in really representing Penal County, which has been phenomenal as well. I could go on this for hours, but I definitely want to get with you offline and talk to you more about opportunities to collaborate and everything, so.
Yes, please do. Thank you so much, Councilmember Biggs, mayor and council. Really appreciate those comments, and I'd love to work with you. I think that would be fantastic. I think that we'd have a lot to learn from your efforts, and I think there would be a lot of opportunities for us to be able to further this work. You know, your comment about the agency collaboration, I agree. It is so frustrating when it comes down to territory at times and not so much around the coordination and the communication, you know? When we had our nonprofit forums, and we started with those, we had more than, goodness, think, between 65 and 70 people attend the CEO forum from the nonprofit agencies. And then, we ended up having two forums for the nonprofit staff. We had 120 at the first one, and the other one we held in the evening so we could accommodate people working different shifts, and I think we still had 50 or 60 people at that one. So, people from the nonprofit community and the agencies are really coming together around this. And there's still a lot of details to work out, there's still more collaborations to really formalize and to put into place, but people are realizing that they need each other. And it helps, too, when funders really reflect that. So, for example, the Villas Health Foundation is doing some amazing work in this space, and they now make it mandatory that if you're applying for funding, it has to be from a coalition. So, they're restructuring it. So, instead of, you know, I have to prove that I'm better than that agency or that agency, it's like, I have to prove I'm working with those agencies, which is incredible. And it's changed who they give money to and what they give money for, and it changes the outcomes, too, to be much more positive. So, we're really wanting to highlight efforts like that and encourage other funders to take a similar approach with it because we're just fostering competitiveness as opposed to collaboration, depending on how we're offering the funding and making that available to agencies.
Absolutely. And I do think the unfortunate downside for Penal County is we are sandwiched between Maricopa County and Pima County, who absorb everything else. And I always joke and call Maricopa County the great state of Maricopa because everything goes there.
That's nicer than some names I've heard.
I'm sure. And so, please do encourage those conversations to keep happening because those collaborations with coalitions and stuff can happen across county lines. I mean, when Penal has homelessness, so does Maricopa County and vice versa. So, whatever we can do, and I don't like kicking the can down the road or kicking the can across the county line, so it becomes your problem or your problem becomes my problem. That doesn't help anybody, so.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that.
Especially when we talk about decriminalization and you have one community that's done that and others that haven't. They will quickly take on the communities, the problems from neighboring communities. It's really disappointing. I think, Gail, hit the nail on the head when you hear that you guys have been working on the issue since 1999 and to look and see where we're at. It's definitely time to change the mindset. It's definitely time to change the thought pattern and the game plan. Look at your faith-based, your faith-based community. You have shelters. There's your shelters. You don't have to build them, you don't need tiny homes, and that doesn't take funding. And I think we're missing the mark. I think we've been missing the mark, and I think it's time to change up. It's time to change up. Start pitching a different game because we're spinning our wheels here, and all these different agencies are competing for the same funding. My next comment is, follow the money. Have you ever called 2-1-1? Let me tell you what it feels like. You start here at the top, and you go in a big old circle, and you end up right back here. Trying to help people through the system is...
Nightmare?
It's beyond frustrating. So, we have, I used to attend all these kind of meetings, and then I quit going when I realized nothing was happening. It was just attending the meetings, attending the meetings, attending the meetings, talk, talk, talk. But there was just little action coming out of it. And so, again, I say, follow the money because I know locally, I'm going to be looking at a lot closer what's getting done. When we make a phone call to one of our local agencies and they say they're doing XYZ, and I'm still three months down the road with the same person trying to get help, that's not okay when they're taking all kinds of funding. It's not okay. We had a former council member that used to speak to this all the time, that social issues don't belong in government. And I can tell you that after going through the process myself with people, it's time to change our mindset. It's time to change our mindset. So, look at your faith-based communities and get them to open their doors. There's a lot of potential there. Floor space, for one. Your initial needs could be met. In Apache Junction alone, we have more ability to house way more than we have homeless people in our community. And then, you bring in the services to provide because every person has a different story and a different need. Additionally, one of the biggest problems that's not getting addressed is mental health issues. I can't tell you how many people we have on our local streets running down Apache Trail half naked that don't belong on the streets because they can't care for themselves. And the system is, if they don't want the help or reach out and get, there are people that don't know, they don't know they need help, and they're out on these streets. I've watched a guy, he had to lose probably 40, 50 pounds over the last year. And where, what are we doing with mental health? A majority of these people need that. They can't, they don't have the, you can build them a house, you can give them money, but they're going to, you know, if they don't know how to pay their bills or keep that going or get a job.
Sustainable.
Mental health is definitely a big issue, and I don't hear that a lot in this conversation either. So, change the mindset, look at mental health, and follow the money.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council. To that point, I was just meeting this morning with Peggy Chase from Taros, and she is coming to our, to our strategy session this Wednesday. We are very focused on fully integrating mental health services into all of this work to making sure that it's included in the detailed tactics, to make sure that we can really further work in that area. So, absolutely agree, we are very focused on that and agree with you completely. Mental health is a huge issue and a huge need, and that needs to be addressed if any of the housing or other services are going to be impactful or sustainable in the future. In terms of the faith-based, completely agree. You know, when we had our faith forum, we had great participation at it, and part of the conversation was really looking at the faith community as almost a sleeping giant, you know? It's this untapped resource that we aren't fully leveraging right now, and it's everyone's detriment. And so, working with Reverend Katie Sexton from the Interfaith Network and really working to make sure that we're partnering, we're really reaching out in ways that are authentic and impactful, and the faith community can really help us get there, particularly because they are so holistic in their response, you know? It's more common with a nonprofit agency or others that they, you know, that a client might go through the program, well, first, they're seen as a client, you know, they go through the program, and then they graduate or they complete the program, and then sometimes that contact completely ends. But with a faith community, that contact can remain in place, you know, it's ongoing. And that's incredibly important, and they can speak to the spiritual needs as well as the physical and the economic and the employment-related and healthcare, all of that. So, we really see our strong partnerships being made possible with the faith community and all of these efforts being more successful as a result of those partnerships.
I think one of the things that people confuse is they confuse the faith-based community with religion. They assume it's religion and they're going to get Bible-thumped and hammered over the head with some indoctrination. I wouldn't work with anybody like that to begin with, but most of them are willing to come to the table and have that conversation.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, and just, they're living out their mission, right? And their mission is to serve people and to serve God, and that doesn't mean that anyone has to convert to their faith necessarily. So, a lot of positive elements there.
Gail?
I just wanted to add one more thing on the faith-based community. Two and a half, three years ago, the Penal County homeless group that was meeting here every month, we tried really hard to set up the one church a night, people to sleep at. And it was incredibly hard to get the entire, the congregation to allow it. There were certain heads of the church that were willing to open their doors at night or whatever, but they need to get the whole congregation on board, and that's where it all fell apart. So, we have some churches that are willing to do it, and there's people that are willing to do it, but you have to get that hierarchy of the church on board, and that's, just didn't happen.
Councilmember Evans, mayor and council, that can be difficult. And particularly with models like I Help, there's some support that can be made available. And the timing might be better now to where we can encourage people to more fully partake in that program. It's proven to be very successful, very empowering. We hear a lot from the volunteers that they feel like they're getting more than the people that they're serving, you know? So, it's very mutually beneficial. And so, part of what we're looking at, too, is that public education as well, to try and encourage people to understand the role that they can play and the very positive impact they can have.
One of the other advantages is that they don't have the red tape of the government in these nonprofit agencies. And that's a huge benefit.
Well, that's huge.
And do a lot more, a lot quicker.
And I do think that with the I Help, I remember those conversations, and I know in Casa Grande, they've been struggling for five years to try to get it off the ground for very much the same reason. And the greatest thing about I Help, what I know Chandler does at Tempe, they're all a part of it, and the greatest thing about them is that the, once that gets going by the faith-based community and it's sustained, the agencies have a place to go to actually help bring the services to the people. And this mentality of bringing the people to the services is asinine to begin with. So, I think it is definitely a conversation that I think we as a council can have. Krista, I agree with you and your watchful eye of what's being spent in terms of service money for that, and things do need to change, absolutely. Things need to change, and we need to start paying attention to what's going on.
Yes.
Okay, well, I thank everyone, but I want to make one other little comment, and it's one of the faith-based groups that we got here in the, in our community is also doing, I'm going to say, helping for people to get jobs by doing the training on it, and they're doing it through the food handling side. And they have one commitment on it, and that is, you get a job and, you know, maintain your clean, I'll say, whatever if you're dependent on something, but that's basically it. And they've done some fairly well success stories on it. And I thank you very much for being in and bringing us up to date and looking forward to seeing you on our next Zoom meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you to all of you. Pleasure to see you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation discussion with the budget for 2021, '22.
Thank you. Yep, yep, thank you, Honor. Bryant Palace City Manager, Oscar Leslie, to come on up here. Before we get started, just wanted to say thanks to Amy. You may recall, three and a half years ago, you asked as part of the East Valley Managers' Coalition to pass a resolution of joint support, and that's helped me be involved highly in this dialogue with MAGA. And I do think that timing is everything, and Amy's right, I've never seen such engagement from the managers' level at MAGA about more than talk, at least from a leadership standpoint. I think that's reflective of their city councils as well. So, we remain hopeful. I know it's an issue many of you are very concerned about. Tonight's presentation is our kickoff to the fiscal year '21. '22 proposed budget. In your packet, you have a proposed city manager and staff balanced budget for this next fiscal year that starts July 1. Tonight, I'm going to be going over the highlights of the last year. I like to do that as a reflection of the accomplishments we've had and then go over the budget. But before that, there are many, many folks in this staff who helped make a budget possible, that helped make our revenues and our expenditures make sense, that align with your goals and objectives, and they're here in the crowd and they're here with me and as your department directors. I want to say publicly, thank you for their great work and kudos to providing a great budget this year that we know will accomplish much for our community. And to our budget committee, Anna and Connie and Leslie and Matt for their recommendations, too, as we are now ready to show you our budget, and then we'll take questions as we're done. So, Matt, if you can just go on to the next one this year, predominantly overriding factor was COVID. And we are very grateful for our partners that worked and Parks and Rec and our folks at Embry to be able to have drive-through testing and still continue at the MultiGen. We had a vaccine drive-through recently at the city hall, and I want to thank all those who helped out and volunteered in our community to be able to do the vaccine, most recently with COVID. And most of the events that we've had, keep going, Matt, yep, had a new, unique flair this year, and I'm very proud to say that whether it was during Christmas time and holiday events, we did it. Easter, we had our flair and our community way of, I'm very proud to say, as I've watched even recently, some cities in the state just barely, you know, getting their library open or getting their parks open. And to our staff and to your staff, they went, what? You mean, we're already open, and we've been open, and that's kind of the perspective we've had. We've upgraded some LED lighting over at the recreation centers, some annual savings, about $8,500. As well as our library programs continued, Teen No Worries program and many other programs. Therapy animals, children practicing, we've been very excited to be able to keep all of those programs going. This year, we had record attendance in our household hazardous waste events. We now do two a year, and we'll be able to continue those. That's a continued program that's in the budget and very popular in the community. And we now have several photos of before and afters of our road projects. This one's on baseline between Idaho and Tomahawk, Southern at Ironwood to Delaware, Winchester from Southern to 16th. The improvements at the median on the... The improvements at the median on the Apache Trail, we also have in the budget to continue those. That's a great effort between some volunteers, along with Parks and Rec staff and our public works staff who've, who have a million things to do, and then in between, figure out ways to work together to get some curbing in and get some, get some dirt stabilization and some landscaping going. And I, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go eastbound from Crisman Road, or maybe even Power Road, and just take the trail and go east. And you'll see that, in my mind, this right here is what we want. You've arrived and incorporated the city of Apache Junction right there, and we're hoping to even do more this next year, so.
It looks great. It looks great, yeah.
And we can keep it going too. The Drainage Basin, this is a, a Public Works effort-led project over on Second Avenue and Tomahawk. This is a area that's in a 404 wash of the FEMA flood zone that gets washed out, hasn't been tested too much because it hasn't rained in Arizona for eighteen months, but we are very excited, right, Mike, to see it work? Maybe this monsoon season, let's all hope, for other reasons, to get a chance to test it.
Every week.
This year, we were very excited to Chief Kelly and his team to receive accreditation by the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Congratulations Apache Junction Police Department on this one, and our COPS grant. And so we're in the process now of filling positions in, in, for that grant. And then most recently, if you haven't had a chance, I invite you to get with Chief Kelly and, and his staff to see the expansion that's there. We used to hold about three to four, now we have room to hold eight, eight dispatch staff members.
That looks great.
It's looks.
It's completed now?
It's complete, yep. Fully complete. Maybe one other? Yeah, we got a locker or two or something, they're still working.
That looks nice.
Last I saw it, there were wires all over the place.
Yep. Yep, come on over and, and check it out. Back in October, November timeframe, the State Land that was up for auction, something that this community has watched now for several decades, and it's consistent with your general plan that was recently voted. And later this summer, this annexation area, Matt, can you do the, the mouse there for that area down there by the 24? Will be the final step of a three-year process that starts working with the State Land Commissioner, the Treasurer, State Treasurer, and the Governor, who said, hey, it's time, AJ, to go annex. It's a really, really big deal. And so that annexation and other items will be coming this summer, like the municipal property corporation, as well as a pre-annexation development agreement. And we work, we're, our staff is working feverishly, I mean, we're very, weekly meetings working with the developer, D.R. Horton, and the Brookfield Group. I'm so proud of them. Every week, to continue on, we, we talk about doing more with less, and at some point, you'll see here in this next budget, that I'm recommending we just can't keep doing more with less. At some point, we have to have some staff, we have to have some investment in our staff to be able to keep doing that more. And you'll, this year, we do have some resources to be able to do that, and I want to credit our staff for the great work they've done the last few years to be able to be in a position to do what we're gonna do in next year's budget. But this is, this is moving along very well, and if you're wondering on the alignment, just one last thing, on the, the 24 that gets to Ironwood Road, ADOT has been making great progress down there, and we, yeah, they are working hard. I, I think it's a tribute to the ability to, to work on land. When you plan ahead well, when there's no houses in the way or nothing, they can just, you know, crank, crank going, just like on the North-South Freeway, if we ever find out on the half-cent sales, should be a great place to work with the State Land Department as well, because there's no development in the way. But I think about a year from now, it could be done.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Am I right, Mike? Yeah. Yeah, we'll get that to you, but we were thinking by the end of the year, I mean, I mean, a year from now, I would say more likely. If you, yeah, I think you knew that the land sold for two hundred, it started about sixty-nine million, and the four square miles ended up selling for two-hundred-and-forty-five million, and that's the other slide there, what, where the, that was the auction piece. State of the City continues, and we are very excited to be able to continue that tradition. Great job, Mayor. Okay, so, for the fiscal year, we have included in the budget, very exciting mandated retirement costs. When you start your budget or start what's needed in your own family, you have to put in the budget those things that are mandated, mandated costs related to our Arizona State Retirement. It was very little this year, so it was good news. And actually, with our Public Safety Retirement System, PS, PRS, it also was flat, or the PS, PRS was flat, and ASRS was almost flat, just a little up. So that's like the first time in many, many years that it's been that good on retirement increases. Healthcare increases were a total of ten percent. That's a big number, and the way we've set it up this year for the, for the insurance is that three percent will be covered and absorbed by the city, while the employees are to absorb seven percent. And then we also have included in this year's budget a three percent general increase to help the city maintain competitive in its marketplace. So we compete against Mesa, Gilbert, Quinn Creek, and many other cities around our area. So a general increase is taking the salary scale and moving it up three percent. People will stay in that same step versus a step increase, which is what we've been doing at two-point-five percent. The good news on a general increase is for employees that are topped out, they will get a, get an increase this year.
I don't remember seeing it that much, that healthy. It's been, I know we've struggled.
Right.
I think one year, we didn't even do an increase.
For, for a few years.
So that's nice, it's nice to see it.
Yep.
It's not a lot, when you add it up, it's not, you know? But it's something. It is meaningful, absolutely.
I'd just like to say for the general public that this three percent general increase does not apply to city council members. That is just employees. And actually, city council hasn't had a raise since nineteen ninety.
I wasn't even alive.
I zipped that one in. Just throwing that out there.
Put things into perspective for the general public.
Yep, good point, good point.
That's true. So for this year, included in the budget, because, we'll start with the growth areas, we're able to have the ability to, to do more, and to be able to do the things we need to do, and advance some of your goals and objectives, and, and especially just the need in development services. This is the area where you have some building inspectors, plan review techs, to be able to stay above and ahead of the work. So seven in development services, one in public works, one in, it's called geographic information systems, which is a data tool that helps us also in so many areas across our organization and in our community. It's basically maps, digital maps, and, and what I would call layers on top of maps. It's a really neat tool. One in IT, three in the police department, public safety, one in finance, and three in the court. In addition, this budget includes two-point-seven million in, in facility improvement and maintenance projects. That includes our sixteen fleet replacement vehicles, fitness play equipment for Silly Mountain Park, we're gonna be able to do some improvements there this next year, and planned HVAC replacements and upgrades, and wireless communication. Threats. So one of the items that's a threat that I like to always make sure that our community knows about and our councils are aware is that you've been tracking the tax, the, the flat tax that the state government's looking at in terms of income tax. In nineteen seventy-two, there was an agreement made between the City of Phoenix and the state, the, the City of Phoenix would not implement an income tax. And so, in exchange for that, the cities and towns said, can we have a portion of the income tax that comes in? So we have right now about a five-million-dollar revenue amount that is a portion of all the state income tax that we all pay, and then a proportionate share based on our population comes back. And what's happening is if, if the governor goes through, the governor, well, the state legislature and govern, the state government moves forward on this flat tax and decreases it, that indirectly will impact that fifteen percent and move us in time, maybe over next fiscal year, to, to a negative one-point-five million dollars to the base budget. And that's significant to us. When you talk about a, a general fund budget, or a, or city sales tax and general fund all adding up to about thirty million, take one-point-five million, you're looking at five percent. So, we just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that threat, I think you are. We just wanted to make sure that, that, that if that does come, then we will, it won't be in this year's budget, it would be in the following year, and we'll have to, have to kind of just, we're watching it, and we'll see when, when's up happening.
So have, when we made the offer for some of our legislators to come and look over our budget and instruct us on where we're being wasteful, have they set that appointment yet?
They're scared.
Has that set up on them?
If they can hear us, talk is cheap, because I'd really like to have them show us.
Mm-hmm.
If you're watching.
Yep. So that is a threat to the future if we, if that does go through. Any other on this? I think this concludes the introductory part of the process of the budget. You have a full budget in your packet. We have a tentative budget adoption scheduled and proposed for Monday, May seventeenth, and then a final budget adoption proposed for Monday, June fourteenth. And our goal is to get it done every year before July 1, which then begins the next fiscal year. We have all your staff here, ready to answer questions, should you have any, and we thank you for your support.
Well, before we get the, the questions, I'm gonna make one little comment concerning the future with the legislative and the flat tax in it. When the City of Apache Junction was formed in nineteen seventy-eight, we knew that this was the rate that we would be getting in for our population and everything on the, our share, the fifteen percent. Our entire setup was designed to operate underneath this, along with the sales tax that we have implemented in our community. Unfortunately, when the legislators did the rating of the HERF funds, which affected our ability to maintain the roads in the community, we had to increase that by point-two percent. That is scheduled to sunset in two thousand twenty-five. But again, what the legislators have done in the past has implemented and affected us. And so, just to the general public on this and the, the aspect, then, we, we, we don't have a magical tree sitting out back here that we can go out and pluck off some more dollars. It, it is not there. When this decrease comes in, we're gonna have to do some major, I'll say, fine-tuning in possibly loss of services, service responses is something that we're gonna be faced in the near future. And so, just so the public knows what's going on, and that we are aware, we are talking to our legislators. I've had several meetings with them, I have, and have been in communication with them, and we'll just see how this all works out in the future. Okay, I got off my soapbox here.
Well, Chip, just also, we don't have the, for the public, like you said, so the public knows, we, people think, oh, there's, I pay property tax, we don't have a property tax for the city. That's for your schools, that's for your county, it's not for the city. So we rely heavily on our sales tax, and so people always say, well, why is the AJ City Tax so high? Well, it's high because we gotta pay our bills somehow and pave our roads and have services like the library. We can't, we don't have the property tax, and now with this cut, so we don't have a property tax here in AJ, and that impacts us as well.
Well, and, and I think it's important, I mean, all of us have had conversations with our legislators at, at this point, not only for our district but across the state, and it is a challenge, because when they're cutting from our funds, we have to make those tough calls about, you know, well, are we gonna have to cut services? And those do directly impact, you know, when, when we have constituents come to us and say, well, why isn't this road paved? Why isn't this done? Where in our budget? Like the Vice Mayor said, you know, we've asked the state legislators to come in and tell us, where can we cut? I mean, our budget is, is quite lean. So I, I think if I could make a request to anybody who's listening, please get in touch with their council members so that we can help you form a, a dialogue to reach out to your state legislators, as much as you're our constituents, you're their constituents too. They need to hear from you, they, they need to know how it's affecting you as a resident in Apache Junction and what you want to see. If, if we want a library, then we need to be able to pay for it. If we want sixteen officers on the road at all times, then we need to be able to pay for it, and, and so on. So please, help us engage our state legislators in that conversation so we can find something that helps our budget.
Okay, does anyone have any questions concerning?
Mayor, do we know when that's supposed to be determined by the legislature? When that goes to final vote?
They're, they've gone beyond their hundred days, so, and they're working on supposedly mostly just the budget right now.
Mm-hmm. Maybe, Anna, do you have, we don't know, right? It's, I mean, I talked to Tom at the league today, and they still are waiting.
Yeah, we don't know. By all indications, I think it's good news that they haven't voted on it yet, because I think it means they don't have the votes at this time. But we, we don't know anything in, at this point. They're still in discussions.
Yeah, well, it, you know, what is frustrating for us when we had the conversation, and again, I hope that they are tuning in, because it was very insulting to hear that municipalities are so wasteful, but yet they haven't been able to come and indicate where that's happening. They get to look like a hero for cutting taxes, and we look like the bad guys when we're telling people we gotta close our library. And so, it's like, thank you, thank you again, nice, nice kick there. It, it, it's just frustrating when the state continually balances their budget on the backs of the municipalities, and we got a good community here. We have a good financially responsible city government here. And so it's very, it was very insulting to hear those things, and I think we pretty much told them that.
In more ways than one. The.
Do you have any? Any questions concerning budget?
I think I did all my talking in the last day in emails.
The only one thing that I, I wanna just kind of bring up for overall conversation, and I don't know who's controlling the thing, but if you could kind of go back to the staff of who we're looking to kind of build in.
Hey, Matt, can you bring it back just to the?
I don't know where that was.
Uh, that one.
Right there. One of the things that I hear and I see as I go across the valley and kind of pay attention to other communities is, is communication, and we are getting ready to grow, and I know obviously we're talking about potential budget cuts and things, but something that I kind of want to throw out to council and get some brain power working on is what we can do to increase our communications department, be that at another staff member, interns from our, our universities, whatever we can do, because as we do grow down south, we've, you know, there's gonna be a couple miles separation, and we talk a lot about making sure that those community members, those new community members feel like they're a part of Apache Junction and feel like they're connected, and that we're also spreading our message down there and what great services we have up here that we will hope to, hopefully have down there. So that's kind of one of the things that I'm really advocating for, and, and last week, I believe each one of us had meetings, one-on-one meetings with staff about that, and I brought that up as a, a big concern in, in trying to increase our communications staff and the level of information we're putting out to the public, so.
Gail?
We've already had a meeting on that, then Granicus, and updating how we're doing it.
Well, I certainly feel like this is definitely something we'll talk in our retreat about and want to keep developing as a goal, and there's a lot of talk about how we manage. The dialogue is really important, and when, if we move forward on a utility vote, we've got the permanent base adjustment done, we've done our efforts with the general plan, and need to have a discussion at some point. You'll want to be able to have the ability to connect. How do you do that is a good question, and how we go about doing that, and build, it's, it's really about trust, and I feel like we've done a great job over time. We've paid off City Hall, we've paid off the MultiGen Recreation Center, the first CFP that was done in the early two thousands, kind of laid that foundation, we just need to keep that going. How we do that, we could talk about, I think, some more.
Okay, no, nothing else. Well, I thank you, Bryant and Matt.
Thank all of you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you all for putting together and being very, I would say, working hard on it and also being conservative as well.
I think this is the smallest and skinniest packin' we've ever gotten, it's usually about that thick. So, tell us where we can get leaner.
Get to it, yep, get leaner.
Yeah, and I was gonna make a comment concerning that too, the other one was eighty pages long. Yes, yeah. The legislators is over two thousand.
Or even.
Okay, thank you, I'm gonna adjourn.